Today is Monday, January 26th, and the time now is seven seventeen. Before I start, I'd like to advise there are a few ways that public can participate this evening. One is by submitting comments to the city clerk by emailing thecityclerk@dailycity.org, and include in public comment in the subject line. All comments received by four PM on meeting day will be provided to the city council prior to the meeting. And this works because I read a lot of comments today, so I did get them, and I'm sure my colleagues did as well. The other, uh, the other way is during the meeting, you may visit dailycity.org agendas to submit comments using the public comment form to address the city council on a specific item. And those are the green cards that you'll be able to obtain at the back of the, um, council on the desk in the back, green cards. And to speak at the meeting, please provide a speaker card located at the entrance. And persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aid or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the office of the city clerk as soon as possible. If you could all kindly please stand for the pledge to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, Madam City Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Ms. Peranio?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, present. Uh, I'd like to, uh, make sure I get this done first, and that's the, uh, Pam, I didn't forget you. Uh, I want to call to order and, uh, give the Daily City land acknowledgement, and then Pam, I'll get to you, okay? The city of Daly City acknowledges that we are in the ancestral lands of the Ramatouche Aloney peoples. We recognize their enduring connection to this region and honor their history, culture, and contributions. As the indigenous protectors of this land, we affirm their sovereign rights as the original inhabitants of this land and pay respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatouche Aloney peoples. Thank you very much. So what I would like to do at this time, I'd like to turn it over to councilmember De Giovanni. She would like to, uh, make a statement. She did contact me earlier, so.
Thank you through the mayor. I just want to make a really short statement. Um, this is my first night back after having surgery, so if you see me, um, since the first night, I'll have to probably have to see how the night goes. I may have to leave a little early, but look forward to, uh, getting back on my feet and serving, um, the public, the community. But since this is the first night, my, my, uh, under doctor's, uh, authority, I would say, that, uh, I have to keep, and I might have to keep moving. So if you see me stand up for a minute, I don't want to be disrespectful to anyone here or to my colleagues to let them know what's going on and the city clerk and the community. So if you see me as not disrespectful, it's because of, um, getting over the surgery. Thank you very much. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember De Giovanni. Uh, before we move on, does any other council members, I'll turn the floor over to them for any quick announcements. Might as well. Welcome back, Pam.
Thank you.
All right. So hearing none and seeing none, I'll move further down the agenda. I'm looking to obtain, uh, an approval of the special meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty six.
Motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of January sixth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by councilmember Manalo, a second by Vice Mayor Peranio. Any further discussion?
I was absent, so.
Okay, so with that being said, uh, we'll, uh, do a roll, I mean, a, um, voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With the exception of councilmember, uh, De Giovanni, and you said you were absent.
Correct, thank you.
So with that being said, it passed. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for tonight, January twenty sixth, twenty twenty six.
So move.
Uh, motion by?
Second.
Member Dasmarc Buau. Do you have a second?
Oh.
Second by councilmember De Giovanni. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Approval of agenda has been approved. At this time, uh, we have an item, uh, staff communication. And, uh, I'll turn that over to our city manager, Mr. Picalati.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Um, just wanted to give, uh, an update. As council may know, the city has received a multitude of complaints regarding the area just north of Thornton Beach and south of the Ocean View Stables. Um, a fence was erected without known permits and structures placed on the property. Code enforcement was notified. And in addition, uh, we've all, myself and other departments are in receipt of several complaints regarding this matter. And, uh, council as well has received complaints. Uh, we're here to give Acting Director of Economic Development, Community Development, Michael Van Lockhuisen, and the code enforcement officer, Anna Santiago, an opportunity to update the council, um, on the recent efforts that the city is undertaking to address the situation. So at this point, I'd like to give them, invite them up to give them, uh, to give the council an update if council wishes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Is it okay? Right now?
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Picalati, uh, Mr. Longhausen, and, uh, thank you for being here. Before we do this, uh, I'd like to, uh, allow councilmember Manalo for a quick comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Um, I just want to acknowledge those that are in the audience today regarding Thornton Beach access. Um, when I heard what was happening, I did stop by, um, right before sunset to see the fencing. Um, it was quite appalling to see that it's barricaded. Like many of you, we grew up here in Daly City or have moved to Daly City, and it is a point of respite for each and every one of us. Um, today, I'm really thankful that staff has really been on the ball to give you all an update regarding this. Um, I also signed a petition, um, to be sent to Governor Newsom, um, in this regard. I think that, um, we all know how special it is for us to have, um, it's actually a beautiful hidden gem if you don't know Thornton Beach. But when you don't have access to it, to the public, it's definitely not what we want here in our community. And so I wanted to say that, um, I, I had to see it for myself. Um, and it's really atrocious that, um, those trails that have been there for many years, um, now we cannot access it. Um, and so with that, I'm thankful to staff, I think, um, along, uh, with each and every one of us, hearing from each and every one of you, this is something that spurred upon us. But I know that as we care for the environment, as we look at, uh, place as a respite, we're all working together as the city of Daly City to address this, and I'm thankful that the staff is here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me, uh, for this comment.
Uh, thank you very much, councilmember Manalo, for your due diligence and actually going out there. I found out today. It was too late for me to get out there, but thank you. Your word is gold to me, so thank you for that comment. Okay, uh, so Longhausen and team, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Anna Santiago, and I am the code enforcement officer for the city of Daly City. The city is aware of a fence surrounding a property on Olympic Way near Ocean View Stables and of the complaints that fencing has been restricted access to an area historically used by the public and equestrians to reach the beach and coastal trails. We acknowledge that the community has expressed significant concern and that we understand how important this area is to many Daly City residents, me included. A code enforcement case has been opened, and I am actively working on this matter to support, from support with my legal team and planning teams in coordination with the California Coastal Commission. We are taking this issue seriously and following the necessary legal process to resolve it. The following complaints we received, our office conducted an initial review and issued a formal notice of violation to the property owner. The notice addresses possible violations, including construction of a fence without a required permit, possible encroachment into public land and/or city right of way, obstruction of a public or equestrian trail used by the community for decades, development activity within a coastal resource protection zone without a coastal development permit. The fence, the fence may interfere with historic access that could raise to the level of a prospective public easement or implied public dedication, which the city is actively investigating. To move forward, we've requested the property owner to provide documents, including permits, site plans, and a survey data. A coordination site inspection and boundary review will be conducted by multi-agency city team that includes code enforcement, public works, engineering, fire department, city attorney staff, and coastal commission. The property owner was given ten days to comply, and that period is still active. Our goal is to verify all facts through inspection before any further action is taken. I would also, at this time, like to provide a public safety report from the police department. In addition to the zoning and coastal concerns, the city has received reports of posted signage near the fence that some residents have described as intimidating or hostile. I also want to note that the individual connected to the site was following an alleged threat to a member of the public. While no criminal charges have been filed at this time, we are monitoring the situation closely and will take further action if any public nuisance or safety violations are identified. We are proceeding under the authority of the Daly City Municipal Code, California Building and Civil Codes, and the California Coastal Acts. The rules protect the safe, legal use of land, public access, and community space and peace. Lastly, the city is actively responding to this issue and is working within the law to resolve it. We understand the strong community interests and are committed to ensuring a fair and respectful outcome that protects both public access right and legal land use requirements. We will continue to provide updates as we complete the inspection and gather more information as needed to determine the next steps to evade any violations, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago, Mr. Longhausen. Did you need to add on to that, or she said it all?
I think she covered it.
Very good. All right, thank you so much. Uh, Zanny, additional comments from my colleagues for staff regarding this? Vice Mayor?
I'd just like to take the time to thank the staff for working on this project and being so diligent in, uh, working on finding out, uh, who owns the property, what the rules and laws are, and, and I include the police as well. Uh, thank you to everybody for working on this project. Thank you.
Councilmember, uh, De Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just also would like to thank the staff because you didn't, they took action like right away when we first even got the very first public comment. And that to me, it says that they take everything in the city and the people's safety and then their access. Um, we already know there's a precedent case, um, in another park, which everybody will be on it, and that you're working in concert with so many departments. And, uh, really appreciate it. It's very thorough, uh, from our code enforcement, ECD, our, our city manager, and our police department. So the community knows because public safety is a key priority here and public access, because I also have been out there, and then, and we know from that area that people are always walking their dogs, and, and that's a place where everybody recreates. It's a, it's a, for their health, um, and it belongs, you know, that access belongs to the people. So thank you very much, and know that the community, I'm sure that you really needed and deserved an update because, and thanks for all the, the, um, everybody that sent out all the comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember De Giovanni.
I have a brief comment.
Uh, councilmember Dasmarc Buau, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think as many of y'all that are coming here to speak on the issue, um, I was quite surprised as myself. Um, I was a drive on, uh, the road over there, and I was like, hmm, how come nobody told me about this? Right? And I'm like, I should be one of the first people to know, as being a council member. And if I was surprised, then for those that use those trails on the regular are more surprised than I was. So again, I want to thank the, the staff for being prompt, and hopefully this solution can swiftly be addressed.
Thank you, councilmember, uh, Dasmarc Buau, and I echo the same sentiments as you. I think I have, uh, all the time I've been in Daly City, I've probably gone by there twice. And now when we see something, you never know how good you have it until you don't have it at all.
Yeah.
So, uh, thank you to staff and code enforcement and the work you're doing. And we are definitely going to stay up on this, and we will notify the public of anything that we find later on in the future. Thank you so much again. Uh, Mr. Picalati, anything else you wanted to add? Okay, great. All right. Uh, moving along, uh, now's the period for oral comment, and I do have some, uh, speaker cards here. Let me see, how many we got? Oh, we got quite a few. All right. We're going to start off with, uh, the Daly City Host Lions Club, and we have, uh, two, two cards here. So I'll start off with, uh, Sherlin Lum and Ray Satori. Come on up, Ray. Come on up, Ray. Great to see you. Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Appreciate you having us this evening. I am the Lions President of the Daly City Host Lions Club, and I'm really excited to announce that we're celebrating our 85th anniversary. The club was chartered in February 26 of 1941, and we'll be celebrating our anniversary dinner at NIX in Pacifica, which we're handing out flyers here for you. We're one of the oldest service clubs in the Bay Area, and proud to serve and very hardworking. We do it with a lot of laughter. As a matter of fact, we've got a couple of Lions in the room. We've got Vice Mayor Teresa Priano, Councilmember Jocelyn Manalo, we've got Chief, Daly City Chief, Christian Cameron, Cameron Christensen, sorry. And I also have Lion Ray Satori here, who's going to tell you a little bit about our club.
The Honorable Mayor, members of the Honorable Council. We came here as a partner in growth and development when it comes to civic and community development. And we're inviting you, including the city manager and department head, for our Momentus 85 years of anniversary. At Lions International, we take pride in the service we bring to the community, the value we bring to our service, and how our diversity makes us stronger, smarter, and more compassionate. We believe that diversity is our strength and fostering understanding, appreciating our differences and valuing our dichotomy of our talents and experiences. Our core values guide our mission and elevate our membership and our service. They are the standards we set ourselves and promise we extend to the world of the Lions Club, and we invite you all. And we are proud that we have two honorable members of the council, Vice Mayor Teresa Prueño and Jocelyn Manalo. We do this, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Sherlyn Lum, thank you. I have another card for Daly City Host Lions. Is there another card? Another one who wanted to speak on it? That's good? All right, thank you. Thank you again for coming. 1941?
1941.
That was a good year. Was that the war?
Oh, the war.
Yeah, the war. Yeah. Ooh. Okay. All right. I have some additional cards here. General public comment, so we are still on oral comment. Okay, so I'm going to go down the list here. It didn't give a specific agenda item, but Terzo Rico, TSR Construction, Construction and Demolition Deposit. Mr. Rico? Come on up, sir. And then we'll have, after him, Zachary Layden, Ocean View Stables, Olympic Way Fence.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Rico.
My name is Rico, and I'm right here because I'm a contractor. And on January 13, 2026, I request for my reimbursement for the construction and demolition diversion deposit for the project I did in Daly City, permit number 058063. The permit, I know I take a little time to, for the application for the reimbursement. It was finished in 2020, and I'm claiming now, and I talked to Mr. Mario, the supervisor, and he told me if the job was finished like a year from now, he will be in consideration. And he advised me to talk to the director, and I went to talk to the director before she retired, Tatum, and she told me I should have gave my refund back. But I've been back and forth, back and forth, so I'm here now to see if you guys can take my consideration, my request.
Okay, Mr. Rico, thank you so much for coming before council. What I can do, this is news to me, but I need to have more information. You said it was something for, something that was done before? You said two years ago?
Five years.
Five?
Four years.
Four years ago. Well, what I'd like to do is forward this to the resources here in Daly City, and they will provide additional information. Did you have a telephone number?
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'll write it down.
650?
Six, five, zero.
Eight, two, six?
Eight, two, six.
Four, nine, five, four.
Four, nine?
Five, four.
Five?
Four.
Four. 650, 826, 4954.
Yes.
All right, well, we'll send this through, and let's see what we can find out.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rico, for coming before us. Zachary Layden for Ocean View Stables.
We have two cards on me.
Huh?
We have two cards.
Let me see. Zachary, Ocean, Tony Casares?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, you've got two cards there. And let's see. Thank you for letting me know. Okay, who's going to go first?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council and everybody here in attendance. My name is Tony Casares, and I'm here with my business partner Zachary Layden, and we own Ocean View Stables on Olympic Way. My primary reason for speaking today is just to notify the community. You know, I know that fence has caused a lot of noise as of recent, and it's unfortunate that, you know, we're getting some backlash for that. I just want to let everybody know that that fence has nothing to do with our business. Totally separate ownership over there, so I just wanted to make the community aware of that. Yeah, and if possible, I'll defer the rest of my remaining time over to Zachary.
Thank you, Tony. Zachary?
Thank you for letting us speak here. So I just want to start by kind of giving you an understanding of what we do and what we're here for. We love horses, we're passionate about it, and we've been actively a part of the Daly City community since we came here. We show up to all of the events, we bring horses there, we allow the community to use them for free. We are happily a part of everything, and we believe in community service. Military veterans ride for free at our facility, that's our giving back. We're building an inner-city youth program at our facility. The things that we're doing are to build community, not take away from it. What is happening next door to us is nothing to do with how we represent ourselves, and it is not what we see fit for that property. Our goals with the property, if we had any vision on it, would be to be a community space and to have things for the community to do. Our horses ride on that to go down to the trails, and historically, this property's been a horse facility for over 100 years, and they're taking away from that. Now, another clarity that wasn't put out is I've spoken to three of the many owners of this property, and none of them know this person who has put up the fence. They don't know the person who has Olympic Way LLC, and they're all very concerned. I am aware that they've all contacted the city, and the city is on top of that, and I really appreciate what you guys are doing. You guys have been incredibly diligent and working very hard. It's only been two weeks, and you guys have made more impact and more movement than I've ever seen a government entity do. So, thank you very much.
Well said. Thank you, both of you, and Zachary. Thank you so much for being here. I think I saw you on TV. And, you know, just to provide the trails for the horses, but then when you close it off, and, you know, it's not your fault. So, we're going to do the best that we can, and thank you for coming in here and expressing your thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. I have a Tori Jacobs for Wildlife. Is this the same issue regarding, okay, I'm trying to get all the cards here, and, oh, okay, we've got quite a few. Tori, after you, we'll have a Stephanie Bernstein. Welcome, Tori.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and community. My name is Tori Jacobs, and I live at Palomar Stables next to Ocean View Stables on Olympic Way, and we share a property line on the north side of the unofficial entrance to Thornton State Park. Since the fence has been erected, this unofficial entrance of the park is now the only entrance for parkgoers to enter. I want to share a recent email from Annie Liedapup. She says, "I have good news. I was able to speak to one of the owners of the parcels who confirmed that the parcels were not sold to Luke B. or anyone else. The owner will work with Daly City to evict Luke, his RV, and get rid of the fence." So I just wanted to say that. But that's not why I'm here. I am here to speak on behalf of the wildlife in Thornton State Park. We all love the park. I've just listened to everybody say we're all here because we love the park, but we don't realize that the ecosystem is collapsing in the park. I am here today to speak on behalf of the wildlife that call Thornton State Park their home and to address the utter failure to enforce leash laws and waste disposal ordinances, which has turned our neighborhood and adjacent park into an unregulated commercial dog park. The commercial dog-walking industry is invading our residential street, transporting via vans and large double-decker vans and trucks of hundreds of dogs a day into the park, ignoring the maximum two dog per person on leash. May I continue? It's not much more?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Briefly, this problem arose in 2020 during the COVID event, when the commercial dog-walking industry exploded and became the largest growing industry in America for two years straight. Fort Funston immediately became inundated by fleets of commercial dog-walking industry people, and Fort Funston dealt with it immediately by hiring a park ranger to issue tickets. This in turn sent a flood of commercial dog-walking industry people to our little neighborhood on Olympic Way. This is not a neighbor versus neighbor issue, this is a safety and environmental crisis. Upwards of eight to 20 dogs per dog handler offload their dogs from sunup till sundown seven days a week, allowing them to run free in the park, in the street, to rush pedestrians and threaten pets. The park is inundated with dog poop, and the trails are littered with plastic bags with dog poop that is never picked up, which is a public health hazard. Ecological impact, the impact is profound. The constant illegal off-leash pressure has decimated the wildlife in the park. The resident coyote population is completely gone, and the few that might or may remain...
Jacobs, you're going to have to...
Okay. I'll come back at another time, and I want to get on the agenda to really fully explain the dynamic. But what I'd like to say is, we have laws on the book, and we have signage everywhere in the park of two dogs only on leash. It's very clear. It's not confusing. And... Don't need a change.org...
Petition?
...to sign, a petition to sign to get people to come here. We have laws on the book. Let's just enforce them. It's as simple as that. They'll be gone tomorrow if someone were to come and start enforcing it, just like work on St.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, our next speaker is Stephanie Bernstein for Thornton Park.
Just going to be short and sweet, because all I really want to do is thank you so Everybody who is working to, well, I'm talking about Thornton, because it's a space that I use, my family uses it, my friends use it, we have people sitting in the back who all use it. And so, thank you so much for taking it seriously and doing something about it, and it makes me very happy to know that you're on it, and that's why I came today, because I wanted to know what updates there were. So, I thank you. And then the only other thing is to say about the dog walkers, she's got a point. There are, that is what is happening, is they just come to Fort Funston. But I think that's something we should address in another venue, but, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. R. C. We have Emma... Mappa? Dorchester Drive? Hi, did I say your last name correctly, Mappa?
Mappa.
Hi.
This is my second round.
Good, good. Thank you for coming.
And it's the same problem.
Okay.
Okay. My sister had her car hit and run, and they got totaled. My neighbor got her car hit and run, and she got totaled. And just recently, my neighbor had a brand-new car, and it got, it's still in the shop. So, my thing is, maybe we should have more lights on Dorchester and cameras. What do you think of that? Because they're running through to get to, you know, John Daly or to get to Joe's to have a drink or two, they don't care. I was coming out of the car the other day, and there's a stop sign here, and there's stop. You know what? The guy just went, and if my car door was open, guess what? I would have lost my door. So, it was very nice, I'm sorry, to call you Cameron, because I can't remember your last name. Cameron, you know, he put motorcycle police or whatever, and they were good for a week. And then now, it's happening over again. And just last Friday, there was a big whatever, there was four police cars. Anyways, my neighbor saw it, and I said, "Can you tell me what that was all about?" But, yeah, he says, "I saw it." I said, "Why don't you take a picture of it?" But anyways, my thing is, please, cameras, and more lights on Dorchester. What do you think of that? Do you think it's going to work? We need it. These people are getting their car smashed, and they're older, like me, who can't afford a new car. What do you think?
Thank you.
Are you going to think about it?
All right. Thank you for the kudos for our chief, Cameron Christensen. I think our police department does a good job, and I'm glad they did do some passing calls out there. And now, oh, he disappeared, but I guess he heard you. Rest assured, they're going to come back out there again. Okay? Thank you so much. Oh, he's giving a thumbs up. I've got a few here, and I'm quite sure, it says, "Speak on a..." D O G G.
Hurry.
I'm sorry? D O G G, Organization Representing F12?
Dog of F12.
Dog F12? Okay, is that on a particular...
I'm sorry.
Come on up, sir.
Let me see. Negotiations, ask me.
Mic check. Right on. All right. Well, I want to start by saying how ironic it is to pledge allegiance to the flag and then do a land acknowledgement when that flag stole the land from the indigenous people. But moving on to what's pressing here is, this is unceded indigenous Alonean land, and it is a shame that we're not deferring to the original landowners about this matter because I do not see any indigenous people on this board. However, I am born and raised in San Francisco, and my entire life, that area has been a beach access point. I've been walking my dogs there the past 11 years, and I've never seen such obstruction. And while I do have my own interest in seeing the land free to the community, I do have great concern in... I do have great concern and sorrow for the elderly community that may just as well have been walking those trails for far longer than I have. Every day, hundreds, if not thousands, of people park in that Thornton Beach Circle parking lot. And in my experience, it may be even a majority elder community that enters the trail from that parking lot, and they no longer can. Those poor folks are now being turned around, defeated, and their weekly and daily routine has been imposed upon due to sheer greed. This is a second... There is a secondary access on the south end of that lot, and I travel this entry with extreme caution, but I've seen other people, determined to get to those trails, sliding on their butts down the hillside. I've seen elders either risking limb injury trying to get down or simply just forfeit entirely, and children do not have any chance to descend those trails. And yes, I was actually seeing a couple people fall down because they couldn't go the normal way. I've seen several cardboard cutouts that were erected with crudely drawn guns on them, and a direct inference that they're prepared to shoot people for walking the trails that they've walked for decades. One went as far as to say fence vandalism will be met with gunfire, which is just fucking crazy and unnecessary for children and elders alike to see that. I want to say that if it was legitimately acquired, because people are whispering about who owns this and that and the right to have the fences up, then you guys got to have to hold the bureaucrat that signed that land away accountable for destroying a community, because this may very well have been an administrative fault. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dog, F-12. I have Tatum King representing herself for general comment.
Hey, good evening. How are you doing, sir? Honorable Mayor, honorable Vice Mayor, City Council members. I also want to say thank you on behalf of a community that also actively visits Thornton Beach Bluff Preserve. I've spoken to you all in the past at different events. And I want to say thank you very much to Mr. Piccolotti, Ms. Mothershead, Mr. Bluthausen, Mr. Chief Christensen, just for getting on this topic so quickly. I don't need to dwell on the issues, because you provided an outstanding report to the community. I do want to let folks know that there is a website, thorntonbeachbluffpreserve.com, if you want to see, track the issues. Again, I trust that our City Council and our leadership, city manager and team will continue providing updates. But again, really appreciate, as a constituent of Daily City, you all taking such quick attention and making a difference in our community. So thank you very much. Ideally, we can come up with a permanent resolution. I don't know what that is. I heard, you know, some discussion of maybe a park or learning center. Again, I know that we talked to Mr. Canepin in the past about trying to figure out, maybe parks could take it on, but I guess the county parks, it's a tremendous expense to maintain that property and the access. And of course, I don't think state beaches... I think they appreciate it being closed just because they closed the beach a long time ago, or that access. But really appreciate you all, you know, actively working this issue, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. All right, we're gonna move now. We got a few more cards left, and we're gonna get into, looks like, Ask Me. Before I do so, I'm gonna call up Charlie Chan, ECD Building Inspector. Mr. Chan?
Hello. Hi. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember, and then the city manager. Yeah, my name is Charles, last name Chan, Charlie Chan. And today, I just want to share my experience working for the city last year, because I just started as a building inspector. And first, I want to be, thank you for the opportunity to help me to serve the city. Before I become inspector, I was an architect. For 25 years, the last project I did in Daily City was converting the Peppin Mill to Moonstar. Yeah. So today, first, I'd like to share this appropriate... I want to share how grateful I served the city in my last year. First, I want to thank you, our city manager, Tom. And I have been participating a lot of the event, and I see that he actually really brings the community together through the event. And even, I remember the last Halloween party. It's so great. So today, I think what I'd like to say is like, how... Why I enjoyed it is because I can give up... I can provide my architectural service to the public. At the same time, I'm learning, I'm receiving a lot, new knowledge. And so my conclusion is like, I want to continue to serve the public, but I know the city also maybe take care of their staff, okay? So they don't need to worry about too much about their retirement or their other stuff. So that's my thing I want to share. Thank you. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Chan, for the kind words. Okay, next we have Felipe Donaire, Ask Me Local 829. Felipe? And after Felipe, we'll have Ryan Fernandez.
Thank you to the City Council and the mayor for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Felipe Donaire, and I'm president of Local 829. In addition, I'm a Daily City voter. I want to thank you for the last good contract that you gave the city workers. I'm here today to discuss the need to take care of the Daily City workers. I appreciate what they do for the city, such as making sure our parks are clean and our roads are safe. I want to thank them for the recreational services they provide to the residents, as well as the library services. In addition, I thank them for keeping our buildings safe. These are workers that make Daily City work. I want to ask the City Council to please provide these cities' workers with decent wages and better benefits. Given the high cost of living and the rise of groceries, they deserve a decent contract. I believe the city of Daily City wants to retain the best and brightest workforce to maintain the best services in Daily City. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Ryan Fernandez. And after Mr. Fernandez, we have Joshua Reeves.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and our city manager. I just wanted to say this evening, thank you for everything that you've done for the city. Thank you what you have done for our union members. In the past, all of you have been fair to all of us, and I just want to say thank you to that. And I wish, and we all wish, to continue this good relationship that we have with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Joshua Reeves. And then the last we'll have is Anthony Walters.
Good evening, Council. My name is Joshua Reeves. I'm a librarian at the Daily City Library, and I'm here today asking the city to help support us, the library, the recreation staff, custodians, everyone that makes some of the least amount of money in the city, for a cost of living increase for our union members that helps us to afford to actually still be here, to continue to work, keeping in mind the Consumer Price Index shows more than a 3% rise in the last 12 months. And our members, some of them make under $70,000 a year working for the city, and that's very hard to live on here. We need the city to put in enough increase in benefits, increase in pay, for our members to be able to continue to afford to be here and to continue to want to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. All right, Mr. Anthony Walters.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and residents of Daily City. My name is Anthony Walters, Union Representative for Ask Me Local 829 and Council 57. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about our negotiations. Ask Me 829 represents dedicated, hard-working Daily City employees, as you know. And we are concerned that we need management to move urgently toward compromise in our contract negotiations. We request your support in directing management to propose quality cost of living adjustments to address severe local inflation and housing costs. We know that you value top-quality services for your residents, which means enhancing salary and benefits for workers. We've made some progress to a tentative agreement, and yet we also need your commitment to a retroactive wage increase that will successfully complete our negotiation process. Binding arbitration is also a logical provision that will ensure accountability and timely resolution of personnel matters. This is a provision that ensures due process rights for workers at a time when checks and balances are very much needed. We appreciate your support for a fair contract settlement. Thank you so much for your public service. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. That being said, that's the end of the cards that I have. So we're gonna move on with the agenda. Thank you, everyone, for providing your comments this evening. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. I'll give my colleagues a moment to take a look if anyone wants to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second?
Can I make a friendly amendment, if I may? Councilmember Manalo?
Yes, of course.
If we can pull item number 14?
Okay, with the exception of item number 14.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Councilmember...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, sound good? Okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Are there any further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number 14? Mr. Piccolotti, are you gonna be the one?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. As the council may know, longtime Director of Economic and Community Development, Tatum Mothershead, retired. Actually, her official retirement is April 1st. However, accrued vacation, her last day at work was Friday, as I notified the council. And tonight, we're commending her. And if you'd like, Mayor, I would defer to the mayor to read the whereases, but I would just like to say that she worked here for over 26 years and performed admirably and has chosen to retire. And I think it's wish her well in retirement and thank her for her service to the community. And I can read the whereases, but if you'd like, or it's up to you, sir.
Well, Mr. Piccolotti, this is your staff. I would prefer if you did.
Okay. So on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Daily City, commend Tatum Mothershead on occasion of her retirement, whereas Tatum Mothershead began her career with the city on October 4th, 1999, serving as an Assistant Planner in the Department of Economic and Community Development. And whereas, on April 2nd, 2001, Tatum Mothershead was promoted to Associate Planner, providing technical planning support and assistance to the Planning Division. And whereas, Tatum Mothershead served in a temporary appointment as Senior Planner beginning July 19, 2002, before being officially promoted to Senior Planner on July 21, 2003, assuming increased responsibilities related to planning review and project coordination. And whereas, on April 21, 2008, Tatum Mothershead was promoted to Planning Manager, where she oversaw assigned planning functions, supervised staff, and managed administrative responsibilities in accordance with city policies and procedures. And whereas, Tatum Mothershead served in a temporary appointment of Director of Economic and Community Development beginning October 21, 2013, and was promoted to Director of Economic and Community Development effective January 1, 2016, overseeing departmental operations and programs. And whereas, during her employment with the city, Tatum Mothershead participated in professional development opportunities, including completion of the 2007 Leadership Academy, the 2013 Succession Academy, and the 2024 Public Sector Leadership Academy, which provided training in organizational processes and management fundamentals. And whereas, over the course of more than two decades of service, Tatum Mothershead maintained ongoing service within the Department of Economic and Community Development and applied her knowledge in carrying out departmental responsibilities. And whereas, throughout her tenure, Tatum Mothershead carried out her assigned duties and responsibilities and contributed to the ongoing operations and functions of the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Daily City that does hereby commend Tatum, Director of Economic Development, Community and Economic Development, Tatum Mothershead on the occasion of her retirement, and acknowledge her years of service and dedication as a city employee. Be it further resolved that the City Council, the City of Daily City, extends its best wishes to Tatum Mothershead upon her retirement and thanks her for her service to the organization. This is your part, sir. You hereby certify the foregoing copy of the resolution, City Council California Regular Meeting, therefore held on this day, 2026, which is... Give me the date. January 26, 2026, by the following vote of members thereof.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolotti. Well, since you put me on the spot, because I put you on the spot, I'll just make a quick comment. I've been on council since 2016, and I've dealt with many parts of dealing with staff. And one thing I've learned, especially with Ms. Mothershead and her staff, is, you know, I ask the questions so that I can become more knowledgeable. Transparency is the key, and I see Linnell there, too. And she's always been patient with me. And Tatum and Mike Longhausen, they've always been patient with me. And when I ask that question, I look at the body language, and I see, uh-oh. I think I'm going down the wrong path. I learned that from them. So I have to congratulate Ms. Mothershead, and for the most part, your entire staff, because you folks are the expert. I'm new here, and thank you so much. It's that we have to make the decisions, and we make informed decisions, but those decisions do not come lightly without what your staff provides to us. So thank you, Mr. Piccolotti, and please feel sure to relay those sentiments to Ms. Mothershead. Okay? Anyone else? Anybody?
Go ahead.
Tatum, if you're watching, I just want to say thank you. When I got involved in like, as a library commissioner, then transitioned to planning, I was like a deer in headlights. And I remember just being there, and I was there with Michael and Tatum, and I was like, "What is a sequo? What is this? And what is this zone?" And I think a lot, out of all the director heads, like, I would say, Michael and Tatum, besides Rose, probably being the most meetings I've ever been in with. And I think one thing that I was able to gain out of this is like, relationship building. And just like what the mayor said, it's like, you go from not knowing a lot of the terminologies or understandings, but you gain a literacy of how a city operates. And I just want to say thank you, Tatum, you know, building this relationship and getting to know your husband, Joseph, when I was on library. And I hope you enjoy your retirement, and thank you for what you've done for Daily City and helping me understand how municipality or how cities work. Yeah, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
As we go down the road of memories, hi, Tatum. I, too, went from recreation to planning, and I have a lot of fond memories in learning and going through the process. in, in learning and, and going through the process, understanding all the different laws and the projects. And it was always nice to be able to see when a project came to us. And eventually, we saw the project come to fruition. So, I'd like to say to Tatum, have a great time. Enjoy it. Enjoy your family. Say hi to Joseph. And I love their dog. Last time, they brought their dog. But I just wanna say it was a pleasure working with both you and Michael. And I hope, I wish you all the best.
Okay. Councilmember De Giovanni?
Thank you. I guess we all have that same kind of story with, they were always available to answer questions. Always. Like, they said, if you, if you need to ask a question, we're here to ask a question. And I have to give it to Mr. Lunghausen, as well as Tatum. It seemed like it was such a team that worked so well in our city. And they have great communication skills, I have to say. And they were, give layperson like myself, and then going on a plan commission, they were able to convey a lot of terminology, a lot of things that people don't realize that you need to know. Will we ever reach their level? Of course not. But they never were making us feel, myself, speaking for myself, never made me feel bad for asking a question, or intimidated, or that, you know, why are you asking that question? They were always welcoming about that. And then, they have so much knowledge that you couldn't package it altogether. And it'll be a big hole in our city. But I know that, Tatum, you're gonna have such great time with your, your young adult children and your husband. And hopefully, you get to travel and backpack and, and just enjoy life. And thank you for everything you've done for our city. And I know that they work very well with our public works as well. When we have all these projects going on, I think that takes a lot of communication in all our departments. They have to be bringing in plans, all kinds of things. But thank you so much, and you'll be missed. Thank you for all your 20, is it 26? 26 years. Thank you for your dedication to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Giovanni. Anyone else? Councilmember Manalo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Tatum, congratulations on your retirement. Wish you the best of luck. You get to join your husband, who also, like all of you, talked about planning. But I did not come from the Planning Commission. Like, planning, planning, planning. But, you know, I did come from a development background. And so, when I started in 2016, she was the Director of Economic Development. And so, I think from many different projects, whether small or large, we definitely were able to work together on many, many projects to see them come to fruition. And so, enjoy your retirement and wish you the best. Say hello to Joseph. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 14 on the consent.
Motion to approve?
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay, passes. All right, next is item number 16, the second reading of Ordinance Number 1485, which amends Chapter 2.16 of the Municipal Code in regards to the Arts and Culture Commission. And I'll turn it over to City Attorney Kelly. Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this item is an ordinance that amended Chapter 2.16 of the Municipal Code regarding the Arts and Cultural Commission. And it was regularly, it was introduced at the regularly scheduled meeting and is up for adoption this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for the City Attorney? We went through this. We discussed this at previous meetings. And this is basically the second reading for approval.
That is correct.
So, I entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept?
Second.
First, by Councilmember Manalo. Second, by Councilmember De Giovanni. Any, any further questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Peranio?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye. Thank you. Again, this is for the second reading of Ordinance Number 1486, amending Chapter 2.20 of the Municipal Code regarding the Recreation Commission. And I'll turn it over to the Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this, this item was introduced at the last regularly scheduled meeting and is an ordinance amending Chapter 2.20 of the Municipal Code for the Recreation Commission. And it is scheduled for adoption this evening by roll call vote. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Any further discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. De Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Peranio?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye. All right, moving ahead. Appointments, Board Commission, Membership Committee Appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have an appointment this evening, but forthcoming, I will.
Forthcoming?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Manalo, for the heads up. Vice Mayor, you got one forthcoming?
I'm working on it, too. Yes, thank you.
Is it because of this roll call we're gonna start working on?
Oh, no.
It was helpful, though. Helpful.
Helpful, okay, thank you. Good to know. We're making headway, Mr. Picalati. Thank you, thank you all. Next is Reports. Oh, Dr. Rod, I didn't ask you if you had any appointments.
Oh, no, I don't have any.
Okay. Council Committee Reports. Anyone?
I do.
PCE?
Yes, it is. How'd you know?
Okay, Dr. Rod, you have the floor.
Yes, so I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy Board of Directors meeting on January 22nd, 2026. A lot of things occurred on our first meeting of the new year. One was that we, one of the, some of the key board actions was that we had a rate reduction in customer savings. So, the board approved a 47% reduction eco-plus generation rates. It's so complicated, I don't even wanna go into it because the way that, it'll show up in your PGE bill, but then PCE will be its own thing within that bill. And the reason why is because PCE provides energy into the grid that is renewable and clean energy. Over time, you're, you're gonna start to see how clean energy is a lot more affordable over time. But given the federal constraints and anti-clean-energy approaches that our current administration go on, it's, it's gonna be a challenge until a new administration comes through. We have a new thing that we just approved as well. So, the board approved PCE's participation in the Willow Rock Energy Storage Center Project. It's actually called ACES, or Advanced Compressed Air Energy Storage. It's a non-lithium emissions-free technology. I think it's one of the first of its kind where you'll see battery generation. And usually, when it's battery generation, you'll have electricity that's stored in lithium-ion batteries. But given the lithium-ion batteries, that takes a lot of very earth material. It starts to becoming very, very, you know, harsh to the environment to get those type of minerals. So, the way that it, it kinda works out, if, just a brief... The way I kinda understand it is that the ACE, this type of project is it uses, like, heat, and it gets generated underground, and it comes back up. And then, whenever the electricity, or whenever the grid needs more power, it gets generated through the heat that is generated through these turbines. I believe China has one of the largest ACES projects, and this is some new technology. We decided to pass that resolution and hopefully, and invest, not to exceed 99 million over a 20-year program. The timeline is that the commercial operation is expected to be coming on December 31st, 2030. There are some strategic priorities that we, we focused on. So, number one, there's a customer focus on a 10-year anniversary celebration. So, guess what, everybody? I'm not gonna come in here saying, I got a PCE update. It's gonna be called, yo, I got the Westlight update. So, they're gonna rebrand and rename Peninsula Clean Energy because it's not just San Mateo County that gets, that gets, that's partnered, it's also Los Baños. And since Los Baños is not part of Peninsula, the Peninsula, they rebranded it, calling it Westlight Energy. So, they're right now in the rebranding and creating a new logo. And also, we're gonna be moving probably around, like, February, March, to a new building. So, we're not gonna be in that current location. So, they're starting to see a lot of growth that's coming out of Peninsula Clean Energy, which will be called Westlight in the future. They're driving innovation in terms of regulatory leadership, economic development with commitment to $10 million in customer rate savings, distributed energy resources, implementation of, or the, the support for virtual power plants, residential solar plus storage programs, equity programs, so installation of 250 free solar storage projects and 200 home electrification projects for low-income customers, pescadero microgrid advancement. And so, we start to think about all these new things that are happening. There's a lot of new things that are happening with PCE, or what we'll be calling Westlight Energy. And so, there's gonna be a roadshow where they're gonna come to a couple of our City Council members, our council meetings, to let us know what's going on with the new rebrand. And I think that's about it. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. You had me thinking, because I definitely know what it means for rebrand. Because when you get all the other entities, well, why should I be a part of this?
Right, right, right.
Well, we're, we're on the other side. We want some acknowledgement, too. Great, great stuff. Okay, any other Council Committee Reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Manalo.
On January 15th, I joined the Basca meeting, board meeting at Burlingame Community Center, the election of the Chair and Vice Chair for the calendar year. The Chair is Louis Veja, and Karen Hardy as Vice Chair of the Board. Also, we did meet as the San Francisco Bay Area Regional Water System Finance Authority. And at that same meeting, the Vice Chair and Chair were Louis Veja and Karen Hardy. Also, the items included in consideration for additional payments to Calpers to reduce the Basca's unfunded pension liability. There was a mid-year report on the current fiscal year's work plan, budget, and general reserve balance, as well as a planning session for the development of Basca's fiscal year 2627 work plan and budget. Chair Chambers congratulated Louis Veja for being elected as Chair for the calendar year. He also commented in his two years as Board Chair, he was disappointed to see Nicole Sun-Dukula leave. Basca is in good hands with CEO Smigl's extensive financial and executive management experience with Cal Water. He also thanked the Board for leading the agency's successes that we accomplished because of our member agencies' collaborative efforts to ensure a reliable supply of high-quality water at a fair price for the Basca region. He believes that the member agencies' unity is what makes Basca effective in finding regional solutions. The Board Policy Committee Chair Karen Hardy reported the committee met on December 10th, where it voted unanimously to recommend board approval for the fiscal year 2627 bond surcharges. The committee was then presented with the results of the 2025 Regional Water Demand and Conservation Study and options for making additional one-time payment to Calpers to reduce Basca's unfunded pension liability. The committee reached consensus and recommended the board consideration. Also, the SFPUC report, Allison Kasama, SFPUC's Basca and Wholesale Customer Liaison, provided a water supply condition update stating the regional water system, storage, and the state reservoirs are in good condition, given the precipitation's date. She also reported the SFPUC's Budget Process and 10-Year Capital Improvement Plan, highlighting the schedule, as well as the status of major projects, including the proposed Hetch Hetchy CIP and Water Enterprise. Also, on the action calendar, the, by roll call vote, the Board voted for Option 3 of various options presented, which authorized a one-time additional payment of $300,000 to Calpers to reduce Basca's unfunded pension liability. Also, there is a continued look at the 2025 Regional Water Demand and Conservation Study. And, let's see, we... Also, the CEO reported on the Bay Delta Plan and FERC process, the SFPUC's 10-Year CIP Plan, and also the effects of SB 707 on Basca Limited, as well as SB 852, which requires Basca Board members to file the Form 700 directly with FPPC. And also, SB 827 requires all Board members to receive fiscal and financial training by January 1, 2028. The next Board meeting is March 19 at the Burlingame Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Vice Mayor, you have any committees? Okay. Oh, not you, no, you got City Council, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, I got committee. All right, I'll give a quick, brief report on SMC, And I can see City Manager Picalati's smiling, because he was there with me. And you're saying, what is that? San Mateo County Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Services Group, which is a joint powers authority. So, we had a meeting on January 21st, 2026, and we discussed many items. Right now, we are looking to get an RFQ for radio infrastructure project. In other words, how can we make our radio system better? Because this serves the whole entire San Mateo County, especially our ambulance service. So, we weren't too happy with what we had before. So, we're doing due diligence. You know, sometimes folks get too comfortable and they think they're only, they're only game out there. So, we're going out and getting the RFQ to see if we can update our system. So, Picalati, is that enough? All right, that's all I have. All right. Did you do, okay, so moving on, city council, number 19. Who's going to go first? Vice Mayor, you go first.
Thank you.
You've got a whole sheet of paper there.
Oh, no, just a few, just a few. On, let's see here. Well, first of all, there was a ribbon cutting at Origili, Origili Japanese Kitchen, where the cookies, what was that? Mrs. Fields Cookies was in ceremony. So council member Jesslyn Manalo, council member Rod, and Mayor, we were all there, and it was a lovely event.
I wasn't there.
You weren't, oh, no, we called you. You weren't here. He was there in spirit because we called you.
Right, she was there.
That's right, you weren't there yet. But anyway, it was.
You took away Mrs. Fields?
Yeah, no more Mrs. Fields. So this is there. And if you'd like, it was a nice ribbon cutting. It was well-attended, and there was a long line of people waiting to have some free yummy food, as well as myself, Jesslyn, and Rod, we were at the, and actually, Chella Anderson was there, as well as other important people who are behind the statue of National Hero of the Philippines, Jose Rizal. And we were, I was happy to be there. It was a nice, it was a nice discussion on where it's going to be and how the library will tie in with books and information. It was really nice, so I was happy to be there. And then I went to the clergy appreciation dinner at Holy Angels, which was, for me, fun because I saw a lot of different clergy that I work with when I sing at funerals and weddings and such. And then, I know I'm missing something, but I will say tomorrow at 7:30 a.m., who else is going to be there with me? Sacred Heart is, it's going to have a groundbreaking at Marchbanks Park at 7:30 in the morning. I understand there's going to be a bagpiper, and that will help us wake up at that time. And so hope to see many of you there. It's very exciting. And that's it for me.
Councilmember Manalo.
Thank you so much. I wanted to let everyone know I joined the Peninsula Division Board Meeting, where we discussed our agenda for the upcoming year. We also have an event with California Cal Cities Peninsula Division League for my colleagues here. There is a legislator's spotlight in conjunction with our city, county, what is the organization called? The one on a monthly basis?
Council Cities?
There you go. So the Council of Cities of San Mateo County, and then there is a Council of Cities, they have a separate name, for Santa Clara County. It's going to be a joint event. And so bringing in legislators, it'll be called Legislators Spotlight from Congress to Assembly. And so it is going to be in Mountain View at El Camino Hospital from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it's free to attend. Also, I was able to attend the memorial service of Dado Banatao. And so being able to see some of the relics that they brought out for their father, as far as literally the microchips. And just over the course of years, I learned that he was also an avid runner. I didn't know that. But it was just beautifully done, from his colleagues to his grandchildren, speaking on, they called it the Dadoisms, where basically a lot of things that he stood for was printed on a napkin, but it was really wonderfully done in Palo Alto. Also, the Onengili was very nice. I think that, you know, when we think about the cost of food rising in the Bay Area, Onengili is a price point I feel that is great because you can get some affordable bites to eat. So I think it's very family-friendly, and I'm glad that Onengili is in there in Ceramonti. On Martin Luther King Day, me and my children joined the march from the train station on Fourth and Townsend all the way to Yerba Buena Gardens and met some organizations in South of Market, such as West Bay Multi-Filipino Center and United Playas. Also, join the Connect Bay Area Press Conference with Senator Scott Wiener, Assemblywoman Catherine Stephanie, Mayor Daniel Lurie, and Mayor Barbara Lee in San Francisco, really to unite on getting signatures on the ballot so that the voters can choose to put resources to our transit systems in the Bay Area. And then also, you know, when we did the ocular visit with the Philippine consulate, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing this up, and I know Dr. Rod was there as well, and the Filipina Bayonian Resource Center and Kappa Cultural Center was there as well, and some volunteers that want to give to this project. It was pretty amazing because I was, I was asking our city manager if there's any place we can convene indoors. Because I'm like, I don't know what the weather is going to be like, and I know Chella can attest to this. It was actually a nice, beautiful, sunny time when we met in the area. And so I shared with everyone when the group came with the idea and shared what they did in Colorado Springs, and that it was by a library. The location, when I went to visit it, seemed like it was the best place because we had that empty plaza with nothing, it literally needs something there. So the foundation agreed it was the best place, and the connections are pretty phenomenal because the president of the foundation raised her children in Daly City and have fond memories of bringing her children to Geller Park, the library. And then I happened to ask Franco Finn, because I needed to give him something. He ended up to stop by, learned about the project, and then his fond memories of Geller Park came about. My grandma lived over here, and so it was really a wonderful moment, I think a springboard to what's to come ahead. So I want to thank staff, thank you so much. City Manager Tom Picalati, and also to Chella, Director of Library, and also to Richard, who came to support. So thank you so much for that. And then I joined the Bay Area Seniors Association. It actually was their inaugural event, a new organization, which was held in the South San Francisco Recreation Hall. But these are Bay Area seniors that are coming from all over the Bay. So it was really wonderful to see them, you know, create a new organizations for themselves and self-empowerment. I have to echo the excitement about the Marchbanks groundbreaking with Sacred Heart. I think that it being the largest private-public partnership in the history of Daly City is huge. I remember very clearly when this was on the dais for us to approve, that we're here now, and that it takes an opportunity to see what could be. And as someone who grew up literally down the street, I've said it before, look, Marchbanks looks the same ever since I was young, and I won't tell you my age. So it's long overdue to be able to revitalize that. I know Mayor had the idea of putting in the football lines, and so I remember that. He forgot. But I mean, it's versatile, we, it's, you know, and it's going to be state-of-the-art. And I'm glad that, you know, our community will be able to have a facility that's state-of-the-art, and that partnership is huge and a community benefit. I also wanted to share that because we did this community partnership or public-private partnership, we were able to share this with the California League of Cities, that how we were able to do these partnerships, that other cities up and down California could hopefully partner with other entities. And so I see Leilani's smile, and she helped me with that presentation, but it just also showed that us as a city, what we're doing is innovative, and that we get to share, you know, best practices with other cities up and down the coast. And so I'm excited. I'm not going, I don't wake up early, but I'm going to wake up early, and I think we're all going to, we're all going to, yeah, exactly. We're going to, we're going to do it. And it's going to, I'll probably, maybe I'll sleep over at my mom's house. She's just literally down the street. So, but that's exciting ahead, and yeah, happy, I know, it's crazy how time flies, but we're all almost to the end of the month. I also want to say, happy birthday, early birthday. We won't have a meeting, so Mayor, happy birthday, because we won't have another meeting, and then it'll be your birthday, and so happy birthday, Mayor.
Wish you guys would eat that cake. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one more, Mayor.
Sure, sure.
As we know, the Super Bowl's coming to the Bay Area, and just to promote Daly City, the Cow Palace, if you're familiar with Guy Fieri?
Yeah.
Diners, drive-ins, and drive-throughs, or something like that?
Oh, yeah.
He's having a huge tailgate at the Cow Palace. So it's a free tailgate, Sunday, February 8th, from 11:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. But it's a free tailgate, but the trick is you have to go into the website, guy'sflavortowntailgate.com, and they're giving out the first free 10,000 tickets.
Wow.
So there's going to be 10-plus restaurants, drinks galore, live music, and yeah, just the one way to promote the Super Bowl and our own Daly City's Cow Palace.
That's great. I hope the point of sale goes to us. With their machines, I'm sorry.
Say, "Thank you, Guy." For me.
Okay, thank you. Any other city council reports? All right, hearing none, seeing none, the next item is staff, staff reports.
No reports tonight.
No reports.
But I will see it bright and early in the morning, sir.
You know, Mr. Picalati, I'm giving you a new nickname. You're the John Madden of Daly City and Marchbanks Park. It's all because of you, sir, so, that too, thank you. All right, next item is adjournments. Does anyone have one?
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Did I have a list here?
I forgot to add mine in.
Oh, thank you. All right, go ahead, we'll start off with Vice Mayor. If you don't mind, thank you.
I don't mind, thank you, no problem. It's probably there somewhere. I have two, and I'd like to start with. You're welcome. Oh, thank you. I'd like to start with one for Adilia Ramirez. She was born in Managua, Nicaragua, in 1930, and she passed away on January 11, 2026. Her parents were Carlos Augusto Ramirez and Isabel Cabezas. She had a wonderful childhood with her family, and after high school, she enrolled in secretary school where she learned how to type and write shorthand. She learned discipline, intelligence, and pride. She was devoted to her work at the water department, remaining a defining part of who she was. Adilia married, and although the marriage did not last, she was blessed with three children, Enrique, Angie, and Guillermo. In 1972, there was a big earthquake in Nicaragua. The family was trapped in their home, and the neighbors had to break down the front door in order to help them out. With nothing left after the earthquake, her sister Esmeralda provided airfare for the family to come to San Francisco. Adilia made the brave decision to pack their lives into one suitcase and leave everything she had ever known. Adilia was brave and courageous. She was pregnant with her third child, so she and her two children went to another, came here, and not knowing the language, she was brave, beginning a new life in America. So right after arriving in the U.S., she enrolled herself and attended night school to learn how to speak English. That same night, she met someone that told her about a job opening in the cafeteria at Bank of America. The next day, she got the job making sandwiches, and she later was promoted to cashier. With determination and willpower, she provided for her family while always being in the right place at the right time. She loved life and lived it to the fullest. She wanted to see everything and do everything and be everywhere. She adored her grandchildren, and as she got older, she was spoiled with love from her children and her grandchildren. She enjoyed traveling the world with her daughter Angie, and Angie and I, we went to school together, so, and I knew her mom's, she was just the life of the party. She was just amazing lady. And she also traveled with her son-in-law, and I always say his name right, oh, here we go, the dais. Her children referred to her as the youngest, oldest person I ever knew. So her son Enrique said, she was short in stature, but she was the biggest and the strongest person I have ever met. In the face of fear and uncertainty, my mom remained strong. That strength is something I will always admire. And the next one, many of us know Bob McLennan and Planet Fitness, and his mom, Dorothy McLennan, known to her family and friends as Noni, passed away peacefully at home with her family at her side. Noni was born and raised in San Francisco. She graduated from Balboa High School in 1952. She was married to her Irish sweetheart, Jim McLennan, in 1953. She led an incredible life, founding with her husband Champion Speed Shop, Half Moon Bay Drag Strip, Champion Speedway, Fremont Raceway, The Carriage House Restaurant, a founding partner of What a Racket Health Club, now Planet Fitness, and Three Motels on Lombard Street in San Francisco. Noni was the backbone to all these endeavors. Noni was either at the ticket booth or running the concession business at the tracks with crowds in the tens of thousands per event. She hired within her family for all these ventures. She would always make it known that family comes first, no matter what. Noni was known for having her legendary Woodside House parties for her family and friends, and hosting the annual McLennan Christmas Party that has included over 100 family members every year. Her hobbies in later years included attending her grandchildren's sporting events, attending the drag races in Bakersfield, and going to dinner at her favorite restaurant, Joe's of Westlake, whenever possible. Of special note, on her 90th birthday, she was the passenger in a rear-engine dragster that traveled down the quarter-mile track at close to 150 miles per hour. And I want to say, when Bob told me that, when I, she got out, and she goes, "Let's do it again." I was like, wow, you know? She was the epitome of a family matriarch. She is survived by her children, Bob, Sandy, Dan, and Mike, Maggie, all graduates of Westmore High School in Daly City. Her beloved blended family of grandchildren and step-grandchildren, Angela, Patrick J., Lisa, Casey, Carter, Brooke, Mickey, Ella, and Catherine, along with her great-grandchildren, Connor, Danica, Micah, and Kalia, will miss her immensely. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I believe Dr. Rod had one, and Councilmember Manalo had one. Who wants to go first?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to adjourn in memory, and let me, for Joy Gutierrez-Pilaris, mother-in-law. Nelia Gallardo-Pilarri, a devoted wife, mother, grandmother, sister, and faithful servant of God, passed away peacefully on January 11, 2026. Surrounded by her loving family and church, she was 83 years old. Born on March 30, 1942, in Makati Rizal, Philippines, Nelia grew up surrounded by family, faith, and the values that shaped her strong and resilient spirit. She was the beloved daughter of Juan Bonoan Gallardo and Florencia Araya Raviles, both of whom preceded her in death. She is survived by her siblings, Francisco Frank Gallardo, Teresita Tessie Aquino, and and Marilyn Gokey, and is reunited in eternal peace with her late siblings George Gallardo and Marie Edna Ison. A woman of outspoken strength and unwavering devotion, Nelia built a life centered on family and service. As a matriarch, she was a bridge that kept a family connected through generations, offering guidance, support, and steadfast love. She shared a lifetime of love and partnership with her husband of fifty-four years, Jesus Pilari. And together, they raised three children who are the pride of her life. Ariel Pilari, married to Anna, Gerald John Pilari, married to Joy, and Eileen Mae Pilari Pensodes, married to Ren. Her greatest joy came from her grandchildren, Jacob Kai, Lauren Ariel, Savannah Sky, Joshua and Cameron, each of whom brought light, laughter, and purpose to her days. Nelia dedicated nineteen years of service in the finance department at Bank of America and the city of Daly City, where she was known for her kindness, reliability, and strong work ethic. Faith was a defining influence throughout Nelia's life. For nearly sixty years, she was a devoted member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, serving faithfully and mentoring others with compassion and wisdom. She was deeply loved within her ward and respected for her generosity, quiet leadership, and knowledge of the scriptures. Her service in the Relief Society was a source of great purpose and pride. Nelia will be remembered by her kindness, her quiet strength, and her deep faith. Her presence will be profoundly missed, but her spirit lives on in the hearts of all who were blessed to know her. Family and friends are invited to honor her memory at Cypress Lawn at Tiffany Channel Chapel, thirty-seventy El Camino Real Coma. The visitation Thursday, January twenty-nine, and Friday, January thirty. And the funeral mass Saturday, January thirty-first. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Manala. Councilmember Dr. Rod?
Yes, I have two for today. One is, both these two people have made national headlines, not for a positive thing, but drawn our attention to really think about what's going on in Minneapolis. So the first one is Renee Nicole Good was a thirty-seven-year-old writer, poet, and mother whose faith, creativity, and everyday kindness touched people from Colorado to Minneapolis and beyond. She was shot and killed by an ICE agent on January seventh, two thousand twenty-six in Minneapolis in what community leaders and eyewitnesses have described as an extradition killing. One that has shaken public trust and reminded us that immigration enforcement, one unchecked, can become a license for deadly force against the very neighbors we called to protect. As we remember Renee, I join those demanding independent investigation, real accountability, and the removal of ICE from our communities where its presence now represents fear, family separation, and state violence rather than safety or justice. Next is Alex Jeffrey Peretti, who was also a thirty-seven-year-old intensive care nurse whose life was rooted in compassion, community, and service to others. For his years as a student athlete and musician, to work caring for veterans and critically ill patients. He was killed in Minneapolis on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-six while filming federal immigration agents. After ICE officers wrestled him to the ground, his death has become a painful symbol of how federal immigration enforcement has turned protests and civic witnessing into a fatal risk for ordinary people. In honoring Alex tonight, I also denounced escalating violence and lack of accountability by ICE. And we stand with cities across the country calling for an end to federal immigration actions that disregard due process, community safety, and the basic dignity of human life.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. I have one. It's with a heavy heart that I'd like to provide the following. Adigna Francisco Carmona. She was born May seventh, nineteen twenty-eight, to Jonah Josefina and Don Agapito Francisco. She was raised in a loving home and enjoyed a happy childhood, growing up as part of the prominent family in her community prior to the Japanese occupation of the Philippines. She was a devoted Catholic throughout her life. Digna's faith guided all that she did. Her deep belief in God was reflected in her devotion to prayer, family, and service to others, and it remained a source of strength and comfort until the end of her life. Digna pursued her education at the College of the Holy Spirit in Manila, where she developed grace, discipline, and strength to find her life. She later married Jose L. Carmona. They shared a long and beautiful life together, raising their family with love, faith, and resilience until his passing in twenty thousand one. She was a devoted mother to ten children. Jose, Sonny Carmona and his wife Feli. Alejandro, Andy Carmona and Christina, remembering the late Marcia Carmona. Giliermina, Gilly Carmona and Alfredo, remembering the late Efren de Leon. Digna, Denny Carmona. Beatrice, Betty Carmona and her husband Scott. Nora Carmona. Socaro Cora Carmona. Cecilia Lealot Carmona. Antetonio Tony Carmona and his wife Josie. And the youngest and favorite Benjamin, Benji Carmona and his wife Rachel. As a woman of many talents, Digna loved to dance and play the piano with joy during the brownouts in the Philippines. She would gather her children around the piano, filling the darkness with music, surging, singing and dancing. She loved telling stories of her childhood, creating lasting memories for her family. She also enjoyed playing mahjong with her family, cherishing the time spent together around the table. You said, "Wow, I heard you." And there's more. After moving to the United States, Digna worked for approximately thirty years at Westboro Royale in South San Francisco as a dietitian and cook. She served others with dedication and compassion, reflecting the care and generosity that defined her life. In her later years, Digna found great joy in food and time spent with loved ones. In her final two years, her childrenly, lovingly took her out to eat every day, surrounding her with care and togetherness for the last twenty years of her life. She made her home with her son Benji, his wife Rachel, and their daughter Noel. Digna passed away peacefully on January thirteenth, surrounded by her children and grandchildren. They prayed over her, thanked her, and entrusted her into God's care. She is survived by ten children, thirty-two grandchildren, thirty-nine great-grandchildren, and one, and two of the great-grandchildren is two of my grandkids. I mean, the, how the circle of life and everybody plays a very important part, and you never know. And I was at the service, and the clergy was trying to do the numbers, and he says, "If I do the numbers right, that comes up to eighty-three." Wow. And talking with the family, they had to make preparations for a hundred and ten. So she'll be remembered for unwavering faith, devotion to family, joyful spirit, and the lasting of legacy and love she leaves behind. Eternal rest grant her, O Lord, and let perpetual light shine upon her. May her soul and the souls of the faithfully departed through the mercy of God rest in peace. Amen. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, is there any others? Hearing none, if we can kindly please pause for a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned.